All right, moving right along. I want to thank everybody again for coming out. It's good to see citizens involved and engaged in their government. What we want to talk to you right now about is the vacant property ordinance. And as the Chair of the Development and Planning Committee, the biggest thing we do on a monthly basis is put ten to fifteen houses on our nuisance and condemned list. These houses that have deteriorated beyond repair. And as a policy geek, I be looking for certain things or anything that can help our city out of the hole that we're in. One thing I looked at that was stated as one of the most efficient tools to mitigate blight was the vacant property ordinance. So I got to work trying to look at these ordinances and put one together that- with health pine bluffs, so I got that together. The second stage of it, once we got it passed through the council, was that one thing about policy, policy is a great tool, but if everybody doesn't understand it, you can't implement it. So I remember meeting Mr. Calvin Bean. And Mr. Bean has been the President of the National Code Enforcement Association. I met him at a municipal meeting. And so as I was looking at trying to implement, we as a council trying to implement this vacant property ordinance with our code enforcement, I thought about Mr. Bean. I called him up and I asked him would he be able to help us. I talked with Ms. Williams, and she said she knew Mr. Bean. So I said it was great to have an individual that our staff here at the city knew about, to work with the mayor's office to see if we could get some funding to hire Mr. Bean to consult with our code enforcement office. And it was a beautiful marriage. He was able to train our code enforcement department about vacant property ordinance. Mr. Bean hails from Aurora, Illinois. And they're a lot bigger than we are. But the beautiful thing is, they've had a vacant property ordinance for the last twenty years. So I thought he was a great individual to collaborate with our code enforcement department. And through this collaboration, we're here tonight to roll out our vacant property ordinance. And I'm gonna let them give you the nuts and bolts about it. And at this time, I'd like to bring Mr. Calvin Bean to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm in a friendly place. Thank y'all for allowing me to come here. Mayor Washington, thank you. State council members, thank you for being here and taking care of your city like they take care of your city. We're just here to help. I'm here to serve. And basically, my background is in law enforcement and code enforcement. I was the President of the American Association of Code Enforcement. I live and breathe code enforcement. So with that, I come, I teach around the country, different places, how best practices, how to do things a little more efficient. So to come here and to see, and to try to meet a need for the city of Pine Bluff was a no brainer for me. I am invested in our communities. And whatever I can do to assist our communities, I will do. So I'm here. Councilman Laka called me, like I said, and I got here. Nevertheless, let's show the video, and then I'll go on. All right. So, let's get into it a little bit. Vacant property ordinances are considered some of the best practices in the country when it comes to reducing blight. I've been in many communities, and when vacant property ordinance were enacted, they found themselves holding their owners more accountable. See, a lot of us don't really understand that people, a lot of people who own property here don't live here. So they're not even here. And so what that, so the primary function for this vacant property registration is to have somebody that we can call on, or who we can call if something's going on with the property. Because what happens when, you know, Cousin Ray moves to Vegas and the property, pine trees and water spill all over the place? You know, we have to have local contact for people who own these properties. See, this isn't a money grab. So let me make that clear. This is not a money grab. This is about accountability. It's about making people maintain the property that they own and give them incentive to do something with it. We know what happens to a car when it sits too long. We know what happens to a house when it sits too long. There have been many, many communities that I've been in, one of which I lived in had a hospital that went vacant for twenty-five, thirty years. It would cost us an excess of fifteen, sixteen million dollars to tear it down. You have to understand the importance of this. So I know some people may not be happy with it, but I'm gonna tell you something. This works. This is the first step to the rebirth of Pine Bluff. There's so much culture here, there's so much history here, there's generations of families here. This is our community. So the neighborhood is gonna be nice here, but this works. I know it works, I've seen it work, we've implemented it, and it's going to make the neighborhoods, and more importantly, we know how important economic development is to our cities. I think if we can take care of our vacant buildings out here and make them accountable, we can garner the economic development to come into our city. That's what we need. That's what we need, the tax base, we need the buildings occupied, we need people to come back to Pine Bluff. I have family that went to University of Pine Bluff. And they think keenly about their time here. So with that, we are going to move forward in this process today. Please feel free to get the current financial questions. I'm gonna be here all day, all night, we have questions after that. But what I do want, what I do want to tell you is that we have to give it a chance. We're at the stage now where we need to do something very quickly here. So that the mayor's passionate, I do my research before I go anywhere. And I know how passionate she is, but I know she's relentless. I've had conversations with her about what she wants for this city. She didn't breathe this. All of you didn't breathe this. So let's work together with code enforcement, work together with the mayor's office. Let's not, let's come together and not fight this, but fight with us to get this done for our citizens. And with that, I have nothing else to say. And now you're gonna direct the code enforcement. Oh, yes. Okay.
I might be able to answer that. I'm gonna give you guys some frequently asked questions. Good evening, I'm probably under direct code enforcement. And I'm gonna come and I'm gonna give you a couple of who would win house implications. Okay, what properties are to be registered? Vacant property, any vacant property or dwelling that has been unoccupied for six consecutive months. That could be a house, a commercial structure, or a commercial space. We have, what is the purpose of the registering vacant property? Is to identify and make an account of any unoccupied property which protects the health and safety and welfare of the general public. Vacant properties can be a false or source of blight. Registering vacant properties persuades owners to come into compliance, especially when the owner fails to actively maintain, preserve, and manage the property to ensure it does not become a nuisance community. How does one register a vacant property? Now, it's not on there yet, but you will be able to find this on the city's website, www.cypinebluff-ar.gov. And you can also contact the code enforcement office at eight seven zero, seven three zero, twenty twenty-one. When must a owner register a property? Any residential or commercial property owner that has been vacant for more than six consecutive months must be registered. A property owner must secure new registration annually as the property remains vacant. How much does it cost? The assessed annual fee is two hundred dollars per residential vacant, building and five hundred dollars commercial, and which is due and shall be paid at the time of registration. Who must register a vacant property? Any property owner, agent of a vacant property has duty to register each property with a licensed real estate agent. What are the penalties for not registering a vacant property? One, if the registration fees are not paid, or before October the fifteenth, annually, October the fifteenth, the owner shall be in violation and can be summoned to Pine Bluff District Court. The unpaid registration fee can, a lien can be placed on a property for any unpaid fees. And also, the unpaid registration fee can constitute a dead owed to the city and can be collected through civil action, through the court, or by foreclosure of lien. What if my property becomes legally occupied? The property owner, the property can be removed from registration by providing proof of sale or proof of listing by a licensed real estate agent. Shall prove to the code enforcement office, and the registration fee is neither pro rata nor refundable. Okay? There are some exemptions to these rules. Building owned by any government entity, buildings in which are vacant due to fire or a godly act, or casually rendering the structure unsafe for occupancy. At that point, the castle would be placed on the condemnation list. Any other exemptions? The available properties shall be registered but are exempt from paying fees. A building actively being marketed for sale or leased. A building under reconstruction or renovation. A building involved in pollute or that the owner is incapacitated after a period of twelve months, however the exemption sunsets and the property is registered unless another exemption applies. And how can you report a vacant property? Simply call the code enforcement office, seven three zero, twenty twenty-one. And we'll be happy to take a look at that property and give the information sent to the property owner for registration. Did I ask you? Can I ask one question?
Any other questions?
How does the, the question reads, how does the enforcement work? We have had ordinances before regarding the renovation of properties purchased downtown. And the hotel clients have changed hands twice and still not been renovated. Does this relates to the vacant property ordinance? Okay, so that person would be sent the registration form to register their property as vacant. And will be assessed that five hundred dollar penalty after October the fifteenth. So that, the fee is five hundred dollars. It's five hundred dollars for commercially, two hundred for residential. You're talking about the penalties, okay, okay, I see. That would be in the hands of court. If they're issued a citation, then those fees will be attached.
My question is, is this ordinance related to structure vacant property?
It's vacant property, it's not lots, not vacant lots, just structures.
Anything works for vacant lots?
Not at this time. I have a question here. Is this only for buildings or vacant lots with overgrown grass? And not, I can't, this is only for structures? Vacant lots would still go through our grass need process? Hosted, digged, if the owner had to cut it, then built it. Right, and if the fees aren't paid, then will place a lien on it. Who gets the registration money?
Yeah, definitely. Right now, we're at the general forum, but we'd probably come back with legislation and put it where it would support the demolition and abatement of properties. Because one of the things that inspired the enactment of this is that people leave perfectly good houses in Pine Bluff to sit and rot. A house that could have been sold, could have been occupied, they sent that house there, and after about a decade, it deteriorates to the point that the city has to now abate. Then it takes us three to five thousand dollars to abate the house. So if these people chose to let this house stay vacant for ten years and they paid the two hundred dollars, we would have two thousand dollars to go toward its abatement. So that's most likely what I'll talk to the mayor and council about, is taking these vacant property ordinance fees and dedicating them to demolition of residential and commercial structures.
When will any automated system be available to register vacant property? As stated before, the registration will go on the website. I'm not sure if you go on there to where you can, don't have to print it out and send it back. We are working to upgrade those systems throughout the city. And this one has a plethora of questions. I'll just take a couple. How does this code apply to commercial buildings? And just in a state of disrepair like Part 28 in Oak Park. Well, well, it's fine. And they are, they're actually working on getting it torn down. So if they get that torn down, it wouldn't apply to them. As far as Oak Park School, this would be assessed if the owner, if still, if still, oh, there is them, so it wouldn't apply to them. What are the consequences of not registering? We got a room in there. Why can't you?
Pine Bluff has a lot of air property. And identifying these proper airs to even, notify them that they have rented the property or to make them aware of this program, it's almost impossible. Because even now when you buy air property through this, by time through the land commission, trying to track down all those properties, all those airs, it's just, you know, almost an impossible process. So that's why I was gonna ask, if they had encountered that specifically in your town.
If we, if we find an air, it don't matter how many there are. If you find one, that's all it needs, one. It could be fifteen.
It would be their responsibility to contact the rest of the neighborhood.
That, that, yeah, that doesn't stop us.
Is this something that real estate agents?
So then, they will be required to list the agent?
They have to be listed with a licensed real estate agent.
And then, so let's say that, what limitations would be placed to prevent that property from being listed?
They have to, they have to prove the listing.
So they say, prove the listing was for six months.
Yeah.
Six months listed, and then six months, then sell, six months.
As long as it's adequately listed, and if that house doesn't go into disrepair, during the time, if it goes into disrepair, then it will be put on there. And elevate that to the condemnation list.
Does the program work the same with the, right now with the property that's back then, or I don't know whether it was three years ago?
No. This has nothing to do with it. Nothing. Mayor Washington, you mentioned one? Are buildings proactively going out to known owners of vacant properties? Once implemented? Yes, they will proactively be sent. Once we identify that a property has been vacant for over six months, we will proactively send those notices out. We're going to start with commercial property. So commercial properties, or we'll start getting letters. Probably next week, once we get everything online, we'll start getting the letters next week. And then we do, the fees will be due on October the fifteenth. If those fees aren't, if those fees aren't paid, then we will place a lien on it probably December. A lien will go on the property, which that will get some property taxes.
How do you coordinate this with the state? Once the property goes to the state?
We have nothing to do with the property going to the state management. Those fees will be added, those fees are added to the property taxes. They'll be added as a lien to the property taxes.
So once the property goes to the state, we have to find a company that no longer has the disrepair responsibility? Does that drop off with vacant properties?
No, it doesn't, no. It doesn't. The city could mail it directly to someone. Just an answer to the question.
Well, it's a potential solution.
What's what?
I said it's a potential solution.
Oh, okay, ask me that.
No, so my question was, obviously, are mailings going out to vacant building owners? But in the same fashion that you do like a, like a program where people have to pay to be on, you know, they could, they will add on it or whatever, what my statement is, is that you can have builders or construction companies that might be willing to basically finance these letters going out because those are the entities from a business perspective that have an interest in repairing those properties or bringing them to life. So I'm just saying that there was a way for, I don't know, let's say you charge a construction company a thousand dollars for however much, a thousand letters. There's an opportunity for it not to cost the city money, and you might be putting that absentee owner in connection with someone who could actually solve the problem. Because we have so many properties that we all know are owned by people who just don't live here. So even asking them to find a realtor or repair it or whatever, they're not here. And so they need to be put in touch with individuals who can possibly help them remedy their problem.
Let me just speak to that. This is really not toward deteriorating property. What this really is about is, if a person moves from Pine Bluff to Houston, and they have a perfectly livable house that they choose not to list with a realtor or put a relative in it, this is saying, this is just to get their attention, to say you have a perfectly good house in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that is not being rented and it's not being utilized. And we want to just bring it to your attention by way of this registration, that we would like this property to be productive with either listing with a realtor or putting somebody in it.
No, so I absolutely agree with your point. And I have a family member who is currently in violation of this ordinance, who I personally, like, you need to do something with this house. They've only lived in and out of this house for maybe a year and a half. And so I would say it doesn't take ten years for this property to deteriorate. It takes a year of that property not being heated or cooled, so they really deteriorate fast. That's, so we're on the same page. I'm just like, how do we spark them to do something about it? And give them the information that they need to make an informed decision if they're gonna list it, sell it, whatever. We want to put that information in front of them at the same time.
And I'd just like to offer up an idea, even with commercial properties. So, you know, we run across vacant commercial properties, we keep an active list of those properties. Who to say that economic development couldn't put them on the website? Say, here's our vacant properties for commercial use. Anybody interested?
Yeah, same thing, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, so this feeds two monsters, you know. So is this an idea that we can use to just to get these, particularly commercial properties? We need people to bring their businesses back downtown. We need people to bring their businesses to Pine Bluff. And if we showcase these properties, you know, as best we can, maybe we can get somebody to, if they allow them, sell them to somebody.
Hey, are we concerned about owners submitting arsons on their home properties to avoid gay fees? We're always concerned about that, any arson. We're always concerned about that. They can, how this gets on fire often.
Well, they can burn them down, we just put a demolition order on them.
Right.
You know, I mean, it takes time, it takes time, it's not that easy. But if people want to burn them down, we can't stop that, of course. But, you know, they better be good about it because if somebody sees them burning down, somebody gonna tell.
Yeah, let's see. Right. Last question. Will realtors assess a fee for registering with them? That would be between them and the property owner? If we, if we could go with our property, like, we're out in the community daily. So if we notice a house has no activity, unhealed grass, you know, things of that nature, we can tell that our house is actually vacant. And that could be even a simple, let's call it a water leak. If they have actual water, active life.
All right, second question, that's how I'm gonna get to. Second question is, as you can imagine, this is a big undertaking for a, I don't know if this gentleman is a consultant, but did they make any consideration of a third party to drive this process?
Which, was I asked it to?
Well, I think we have in the ordinance that the city could do such a thing. We're gonna try first to enforce it, I said. But I think that is wrong for contracting out such a service. Excuse me? No, we don't have an app yet.
You could use Google Docs to have people input this information in there. Get some capture, because all you're trying to do is create a database.
That's all.
So basically, you could use Google Doc and back it into like an access database. That's, that's not hard. That's, that's not hard.
Any questions? Has this ordinance already passed? Because I don't see five hundred dollars a year after the term for somebody.
It has passed. It has passed.
Yes, it, it passed. Oh, let me see. Let me see, I'm looking at the ordinance in my hand right now. It passed in two thousand twenty-one in September. So it's, it's more than a year old. The problem with public policy, it takes about five minutes to pass a piece of legislation. Sometimes it can take six months, a year, twelve, eighteen months to implement it. Because what implementation entails is educating the department that's going to implement it, giving the proper training and some of the forms and all the notes and votes that sometimes it takes to, to implement a policy. So, I mean, I try to tell people the easiest thing to do is pass legislation. The hardest thing to do is get everybody to buy into it and get the, the tools that are needed to implement it. Ms. Bean?
Yes, I, I'd just like to say that, you know, when research was done, the creation of this vacant property registration ordinance, it was well done. Generally, the five hundred dollar fee is what most commercial properties pay. I was saying that the research that was done prior to this ordinance was well done and, and well thought out. There was comparable cities, they were, when I, when I, when I first saw it initially, I fashioned it to other places that I've been and most, most places across the country have these price points for vacant properties. But what we don't want to do is hinder those good property owners, good people who own properties, take care of those properties, hit them with a thousand dollar fee, and they're maintaining them as opposed to those who aren't maintaining them and they're paying the same fee. So the end goal here is to really try to not hurt people, but just motivate people to do something with them. And if we charge people more than what the national really average is, and I'm not saying that we couldn't, but what I am saying is that we want, we don't want to hurt you if you own a property and you cut it and you keep it maintained and, and with a thousand dollar fee unless the, the one next door is vacant and they ain't cutting the grass and they're paying a thousand dollars. It just, it doesn't balance out. Yes, sir.
So if I have utilities on that property, am I exempt?
No.
But it's not vacant?
It is vacant.
You just have utilities on it.
So we don't have utilities, no franchisees, and maintaining it? But so, I'm not asking how you could find a vacant property if people traffic.
Most vacant houses don't have utilities, but there are some that do. So if we notice there's no traffic, no business traffic to the property, then we know it's vacant.
Yes, but deterioration comes with a lack of utilities. So if I'm saying I want to keep my heated air on and place.
It's still vacant.
So then, that's not how you keep a private vacant property?
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is what? Well, there are quite a few conditions in the ordinance that define vacant, overgrown and neglected vegetation, accumulation of hazardous and noxious, unsafe substances, accumulation of newspaper, circular slime, windows and entrances to the property that are boarded up, closed off, or multiple window panes that are damaged, doors that are to the property that are broken off, statement of neighbors regarding lack of activity. And that's what's going to get you, Mr. White, is that, that the neighbors are saying nobody ever comes to this residence. But what I'm saying is, we have enough vacant properties with no utilities and overgrown grass, and if you keep your property manicured and electricity on, that's not going to be high on our list to prosecute. But if you have an overgrown, trashy piece of property that everybody complains about, because I know some people that own property that come by just once a month. They come by, look to the property, check it in, they have lights, water, gas, they cut the yard. That's not going to be a problem that's going to be high on our list in terms of the volume of vacant properties that have no electricity, that have no yard maintenance, that, that are trashy. So I'm not saying you will be exempt keeping the lights on, but what I'm saying is, it won't be a high priority for our inspection officers that are inundated with a whole bunch of vacant properties that are just unkempt. Any other questions? But I'd like to say thank you to everybody that's coming out for the vacant property ordinance. Anyone can call either code enforcement, Ms., Ms., what do you want to say?
Seven three zero two zero two one.
Or you all have anything?
There are actually copies of the ordinance on the front table that you guys can get with.
And feel free to call me as chair of the development and planning committee, five oh one, three one nine, two oh one, keep. With any questions, comments, or anything that we can do to make the ordinance better. Now, Ms. Bean, you all want to get some contact information for further questions?
You can contact the street department at eight seven oh, five four three, five one four one, or you can contact me on my cell phone at eight seven oh, six four three, nine seven five nine. We'll be more than happy to answer any questions that come up. Now, may anyone close us out?
We want to thank all of you for your attendance tonight. We'd like for you all to share this information with your neighbors, with your family, with your friends, so that they'll know this is up and coming. The C click, I think it's going to be an application that's going to really serve our community well as far as reporting those issues that need to be reported. I think we'll all get on board with the vacant property ordinance as time passes. I think that's something that has to be gradually rolled out and introduced, and we may have to do a few more of these meetings. And if you have questions, invite, take those questions from your relatives, your friends, so that those questions can be called into my office. We'll make sure, or they're going to be shared in a development and planning meeting. Those are public meetings that, that we can address those things. We want you to know that as we continue to move forward, we'll be having another meeting on April thirtieth. It will be a town hall meeting or such, but it's one of those Pine Bluff Live on Sunday number five. And at that meeting, we're going to have a camp, a camp sign-up time for our summer programming for students as well as summer job fair. Okay, she didn't have. So it'll be a summer jobs, summer work camp set up along with our Pine Bluff Live on Sunday number five that will start at five o'clock. So we, we have Sunday number five at five here at the convention center. It will start at five P M sharp in the auditorium. And then the area, in the concourse area, will be set up with vendors, it will be set up with folk who have summer programs, activities for kids to sign up for summer camps. So summer camps and summer jobs will be, will be part of the focus on, on that evening. Our Pine Bluff Live on Sunday number five will be a splash of talent, and this is talent that's always presented with a spirit of excellence. We did our first one on the fifth Sunday in January, and it was phenomenal. So we don't want you to miss this, I call it a talent extravaganza, if you would. So we do one of those every fifth Sunday. But we want parents to know of the job opportunities and the camp opportunities, so they can start signing up in the last of Aprils, and then we'll go through the rest of the month of May, helping them find those opportunities that are out there. Thank you for coming. We look forward to seeing you on the thirtieth, and we'll keep you posted on all of our upcoming events and programs as we strive to move Pine Bluff forward. Thank you.